Still close.
Yeah, I agree.
Ready to roll.
Yes, we have all the president.
Your city would be here.
Nope, I don't. We gotta see these.
Falls in on you. Backroom is excused. Let's call the meeting board, please. Fresh I am on the agenda. Actually, why don't we skip over the meeting minutes? Is there a motion to do that? So one of second. All in favor? I want to go. I agree. The chicken and other business. I could go to you. South Peak Resort revised master plan. Presentation of provisions to the master plan for South Peak Resort revised master plan for the ski lift design service trails on South Peak with the support of Loom Mountain Ski Resort owned by Loom Mountain Corporation. With a number of ski and ski out trails be located within the boundaries of South Peak Resort created to provide access to hotel guests to dwell in within the South Peak Resort. Well, good evening. Thank you for all getting together and getting everyone together at the same time to have us all give updates. We were asked by the planning board and we really understood at that point before we continued moving forward with any small development projects inside and South Peak Resort. Master plan project. As a whole, to take a pause and focus our attention updating the town on where we're at with inside that master plan. So that's why we've seen us continuing one simple eight lot subdivision. That was out of respect for the board to say, we're not going to come and ask for anything until we have the ability of getting everyone together to look and get all the information. So. You have worked very hard with a whole team of consultants to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Derek and have him kind of run through everything that we have. Put together. Uh, so to refresh everyone's memory, my name's Eric Click. I'm an attorney before in Reno Law Office in Concord. I'm Mark's counterpart with the acquired it. We did a fair amount of due diligence and today I was brought in to make sure that we could update you. What is with respect to the original master plan that was approved back in two thousand and six and how it has progressed over time? Technically, we're here really about an eight lot subdivision tonight. We get to that point now that essentially that. Lot subdivision rejigger things and add a lot to it. But we understood that before we got there, the planning board in particular wanted to have an update as to how what we are doing fits in with the master plan. So that's what I attempted to put together for you tonight. I've given you four documents. I'll walk through them each, so you have a good sense of what they are. The first document we're going to review is this packet here. It's going to.
Email those to Ray because Ray is on there or just not have any other.
So the answer is they are so large that they are not available from here as for a share file system. But this is just so everybody knows, this is almost identical to the master plan update that we provided to the technical review committee. That Ray had reviewed or had access to three or four weeks ago. There've been one or two planned additions, but other than that, it's exactly the same thing. So first pack, just so you understand what this is. In two thousand and six, the town approved a narrative master plan. This document is an exact duplicate of that master plan, the text in that master plan with bolded updates for each section. So what we did was we said, here's what the town approved back in two thousand and six. Now let's tell you where we are with respect to each section. I'll walk through that in just a minute. If that's what that document is, is the original language with updates under each section to say where we are. The next packet of materials are the large eleven by seventeen packet. This has two sets of plans in it. The first fourteen pages are the original materials that were submitted in two thousand and six to the planning board when the master plan is approved. These are basically concept plans to give for the time. An idea as to generally where the project was going to go. There's some schematics about roads, all that we can get there in a minute. But ideally, the first fourteen pages are looked to to say, okay, this was generally where they thought things were going by concept. And then the remaining pages, which I'll walk through in just a minute, go the next step and say, okay, here's what was approved. And we walked through each phase and I'll do it very quickly. We're not going to labor the point, but we still see how it's been filled in and developed in phases over time and then what the concept is. Then we have one additional sheet, which is actually an update to one of the sheets that's in here. This shows the current. Open space, just a. Generic. But. We'll see that's what this plan is. Questions page, it's a front and back page, which we tried to touch on the key issues seem to come up on that planning board meeting. But let's start if we can just with what was done in two thousand and six. Unless you have a quick problem mentioned too, it'll give the chance to kind of let it all, a lot of things all come together. So and one of the other things that we're trying to do with this is document and show how we can continue to document things for the future. So it'll be a clean way to move through this for the foreseeable future as we get to keep adding to the this as we go forward. What I anticipate as this project goes forward over the next several years is this document is going to be our base document. And so you'll see a June two twenty twenty three supplement. I expect maybe we'll have a June twenty twenty four whenever we're back. So we keep going. So everybody knows where the starting point is where we are now. Dive in and all right. So let's start on page one of the document, the first tech page. What this really identifies is the initial developer was sent texts that we had interim developers in between you guys all are familiar with. And now we're here today with South Peak Park goes in. You'll see on the first page, there was three hundred, there were three hundred and ten acres that were the original part of the of the development. And in the document, a little bit later on, they were referencing that they were going to be likely adding another lot to it. And they did do that. That lot, some of you know, is called the Halsey lot. That Halsey lot was added in the middle of the planning board review process. So by the time it was approved, the Halsey lot was part of it. And the important part is it started out at three hundred and ten acres. It is actually three hundred and sixty two and the three hundred and sixty two is what was approved. When the planning board started reviewing this in January of oh six, the Halsey lot was taken under contract and it came into the project. I want to say February, March, and I just sold me the group like air dish, some of that. Second, second page, they identified in the initial packet what the allowable density was. And at the time it was nine hundred and one units. Let me give you a sense of how that was calculated. They simply took the three hundred and ten acres and they divided it by fifteen thousand square feet, which is how many square feet were needed for a lot. They came up with nine hundred and one. When they added the Halsey lot to it, this is in this bolded section in the middle of the page, they actually came up with another hundred and fifty units, which would have brought them to a thousand and fifty one. And then the engineering folks went back and pulled out all the riparian streams, wetlands and those types of things and pulled that from the fifteen thousand square feet calculation, which reduced the total number of acreage. And that's how they ended up at the one thousand and eighteen units at the end of the day. So as of the time it was approved, the thousand and eighteen units is what the town approved and what ultimately the select board through development agreements is always agreeing throughout. The next page, page three, the important point here, and we'll see this, it's more represented on the plan, I'll show you in a moment. But on page three, what I wanted to do is identify the units as they were built over time. And we'll see this depicted on the plans in a moment. But the high level information that you need out of the thousand and eighteen units currently today before this eight lot subdivisions before you all the way up through the last approval, which was the fireside condos a couple of months ago. Two hundred and twenty two units out of the thousand and eighteen have been approved by the town over the year. Some of those are condos. Some of those are single family lots. But when you do all the math, it came up to two hundred and twenty two units approved. That leaves seven hundred and ninety six units to be developed based on the master plan. And tonight, for example, when you get to the eight lot subdivision, even though there are eight lots being proposed, as I mentioned, it's actually rejiggering and taking the space of seven old lots. So for example, if you approve the eight lot subdivision tonight, the total number approved is two hundred and twenty three. There's one net change tonight if you approve that that subdivision. Fast forward to the forward, I'm going forward in the document. A lot of this is identifying what areas there, none of that has changed. Say exactly that. There's a discussion on page five, this next I think substance of section where it talks about resort access. It's talking about roads and development and a roundabout, et cetera. We've acknowledged the roundabout that was initially discussed that like content has not been been developed. However, it very likely could be or something very similar to like it whenever we get to the next several phases, which could be, as you'll see in the plans in a moment, this this hotel type complex in the middle of the of the development. Uh, want to fast forward, I think the next key section, a lot of the pages seven and eight, for example, talk about amenities that were being discussed when we ultimately build out the resort complex. The only takeaway there, this seven and eight again, is when you, we get to the point of the next phases, talking about the hotel use and the resort use, there was a lot of discussion in the master plan about a terrain park, tennis courts, fence plaza, retail facilities to service the skiers in the hotel area. All that will be presented as the phases progress. We'll see all of that in detail when we actually get to that point. We haven't got to those phases just yet. The next section of the document, page nine forward till really almost the entirety of the rest of the document focuses on. Probably through twenty two or twenty three. What the initial developer did using Horizon was an engineering firm. They went through your town ordinances, including the site plan regs and the zoning ordinance. And they identified how they would have to come forward and meet those ordinances over time as the project progressed. And the couple tapeaways there, I direct you, I guess, to the very end of the document. Um, and let's go to page. Let's go to four. And here on page twenty four, there's a discussion about water and sewer infrastructure. And there was an agreement reached by the town in June of two thousand and six, where, and it's identified in our fact sheet here as well. But as of June of two thousand and six, the town and the developer at the time entered into an agreement that said, you must, you developer must do certain things to make sure that our water and sewer. Your water is met. And. There were two additional documents. All those improvements had in fact occurred. Water and sewer line were et cetera. They identified the capacity was in fact met. As we all know, there was a hiccup because there was a water tank issue. That water tank issue has been addressed so far as we know, we're waiting for final plans. But that was the one hiccup with the water that you guys I think have heard about regarding the high pressure zone above a certain elevation. Question was whether or not that the capacity was there. And the understanding was after this was approved, that there would be a tank installed to help meet those needs. The prior development developer did not do that. There was a soup with the town involving the prior developer. That's when Mark came on board and part of the coming on board was to say, we'll take care of it. And we agreed, Mark agreed that he would build the tank. And then through negotiations with the select board, the select board said, we may want a larger tank that will serve with your development in the town. Would you be willing to potentially provide funds to the town however much it would cost you to build your tank to begin with? So that we can use that to supplement and build a larger tank. Mark agreed to that. There are funds set aside in a letter of credit in the amount that would be equivalent to what it would cost them to build the tank. And we basically are waiting to see if the National Forest Service, I think, agrees to allow for the signing of the tank. One way or the other, either through a tank the size Mark needs with Mark's money or a town that's larger that the town wants will be built. And the water needs will be met for those high pressure areas, just to be clear. Um, if we turn to the next page, page twenty five, there is a series of requirements and discussions about what ultimately needs to be provided. They talk about the master plan, which was in fact provided, road plans, which were provided as part of the master plan. Open space, there's a plan that discusses the open space that was going to be set aside. It's generic number. We have a plan that shows what's currently out there today. And then infrastructure plans, that's again on page bottom piece twenty five. As far as infrastructure goes, there was an agreement as part of this master plan and then the subsequent agreement from June of oh six that said that the developer at the time had to implement certain infrastructure improvements in order to get approval. And it was laid out and in fact, there was a traffic study that was done and based on that traffic study, they determined what needed to be done. The town acknowledged in the later agreements, I think nineteen, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty one, all of those improvements were need, that were needed were in fact done. There's nothing further to be done with respect to infrastructure and it was agreed that the infrastructure improvements would meet the project at full buildout. It was understood that the thousand and eighteen units, hotel, retail, single family condos is what was planned, restaurants, et cetera. For the skier services, the services would need to be implemented. They were in the town as stamp of approval saying that that was done. Turn to the next page. There's a discussion about order of adjustment and it goes on to page twenty eight. And I think this is important on twenty eight. There are a couple of areas that the developer in two thousand and six acknowledged that he would like likely have to come to the zoning board to see the variance for certain items that he was considering development. One, and you see it here, number one is building height. We'll see the schematics in a moment again, concepts, but as a general concept, they understood that their building concept heights were higher than what was allowed by the town. And they understood that they would likely have to go to the zoning board to get approval if they went forward with that. So we acknowledge that, that's understood. Building setbacks. It was understood that if there were issues with respect to setbacks, they would have to be reviewed essentially by the planning and the zoning board. It was acknowledged that because there were going to be condos and a hotel and other services like that all clustered together. This was a cluster development that was proved that the setbacks would not be met in every instance, because those types of uses needed to be close together. So they acknowledged that and the master plan accepted that that was going to be the case. Parking requirements, number three. There was in fact a parking analysis undertaken, but it was expected that by the time they finally got around to developing the speed of the project, there would have to be more thorough review of the parking. We anticipate that coming forward and we get to those pieces of design. So what I've done, we now run through it, try to get through quickly. But essentially what I've done at Mark's instruction was to take what was initially approved. We got the Microsoft Word version from Horizons. I just put it on this page and then added some of this stuff. So this is what we. Updating on where we stand with respect. Let's move if we can to the large plans. I think it'll be helpful. Take the words and put it on the paper to actually see it in practice. The first fourteen pages are what was submitted with the initial application as concepts and explain generally what they were looking for. I'll look at it very, very briefly. Pages four, five, and so four, there were four, seven. Eight and nine are really just showing what was there currently in the road and water networks that were envisioned as a general concept. So it was kind of giving the board at the time an idea as to where things were presently and what they were planning. Page five takes and six, take the general idea of where are things going to be placed? How is this going to work? And the idea was to show there's going to be mixed use development, different densities. Um, and they showed over on the left hand side, I guess it's yellow. Those sites, I think there were fifty six of them, were already approved at the time the master plan came to the town. So this was taking what was already there and expanding essentially westward was the idea. One thing I want to point out on page five that's important for our discussion, because I know it was a matter of concern, is the common space, the common area of an open space calculation. Here, they identified back at the time in two thousand and six, that they were going to have nine acres of common space set aside. Now, I'm sorry, common open space set aside. And this was a discussion at the last planning board meeting. They wanted to know where open space was going to be, how it was calculated, et cetera. I mentioned it in the fact sheet, but I think it's important and it'll be helpful for you in the concept of this. When this was initially approved, the way they found out how dense it could be, again, was say, how many acres you got? How many fifteen thousand square foot lots to fit in it? That's what you're about. That's how they determined the density. The developer also agreed, and it's in the fact sheet, we could turn it in a minute, that there was a requirement that no more than seventy percent of any lot could be covered with non-permeable space, et cetera. The developer in two thousand and six agreed to that. Mark agrees to that, of course, as well. So in addition, when you're looking at this as far as open space goes, there are ski trails, there's areas around the river, there's areas where the water tank is going to be. But there's also open space on each and every lot. And for purposes of today, when we get to that point, we didn't even calculate that where it is, just to give you a sense of where we are. Now, understand this nine acres was based on the original lot, not when Halsey added to it. When you add, this calculates essentially to three percent of the lot. And when you add Halsey to it and you do the math, it comes up to eleven acres. So Mark understands and we understand that really the the sort of bare minimum would be eleven acres, not nine, because Halsey was added to this. We're, you'll see in a minute, we're well, well above that and always will be. But for purposes of you guys understanding what was understood at the time and agreed to, that's where we see it on the plan. Um, if you thumb through the rest of the plans, ten, eleven, those kind of give you a sense of what they were thinking about amenities down by the hotel, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Those were some schematics. Again, concept, here's kind of what we're thinking when it comes to a hotel. At the time, nobody understood exactly what was going to be done, but they had a sense in the document, say, it will be a hotel, there will be retail, skier services, et cetera. And he just wanted to give the board a sense of where they were heading at the time. At the end of the day, before any hotel gets built, you guys will be seeing all of the design. You guys will be seeing whether you like it or not, maybe some of this or not, but you guys get the thumbs up or the thumbs down. So we will be coming to you in the future. Let's move to what I think is the most important part of presentation tonight. That's starting on page sixteen of these plans. And I apologize in advance, I noticed that two or three pages, the page nation dropped off the page that wasn't right to follow on. Page sixteen, this is to give you an idea of what the lots look like. Combined together as of two thousand and four, this is before the fifty six subdivided lots over to the east. This is the entire acreage that we're talking about. This is the area in which Mark is allowed to do to do his cluster development. Page sixteen walks you through what happened first. Sorry, seventeen, my apologies. Page seventeen walks you through what happened first. We had two thousand and five. Phase one, which were these the subdivided single family lots over to the east. My recollection is the fifty six. Page eighteen, it should have the next step. They also developed over near the river, the riverside condos. That was approved in two thousand and seven as well. Those were constructed. Of note, I believe two hundred units were initially considered and approved. I think they only built forty is my recollection. Fast forward page nineteen. Here now, what's happened is we're starting to fill in the middle of the lot in two thousand and seven, this Crooked Mountain Woods subdivision was approved. And as was intended, over phases, we're starting to fill in parts of the lot as we go. The next one, it's not really that significant, but we're showing the G lift or any base lift. Put in and approved in two thousand and seven as well. Age twenty one, the next event that occurs is there were N D O. Over at the time, as in two thousand and eleven, came in and got additional subdivision of lots approved, again, single family homes even further. Page twenty two, there was a small additional subdivision in two thousand and fourteen, again, mostly down by the river. We see the lots in a slightly different color. We're just kind of filling in. We go to page twenty three, which we lost the numbering, but the next page is titled twenty twenty two base three eighteen lot subdivision. This was approved by this board. Fill in filling in in the middle of everything is just continuing to fill in as. Faces go. Then we go to the next page, fireside condos. These are the ones that were just a couple of months ago. And you'll see them down in the, what color that is, bluish, purplish, down on that. That's section over by Riverside. So as of today, if you were to look at what it looks like, this is the way the property has been subdivided over time. We're filling in the center. I think there'll be a little bit more of that, as you'll see eight lot subdivision in a minute. And then what Mark has planned, and we'll see it in just a minute, is really expanding west. That's where things really changed to where we're starting to talk about the hotel, retail area, parking, shops, those kinds of things. And then further west, the plan is to have more residential ski and ski out areas. But ultimately, this is where we are today before we talk about the eight lot subdivision. If we. Fast forward, I believe we are now talking about what we're here today. You'll see the twenty twenty three phase five lot line adjustment in Crooked Mountain Woods. And you'll see we're basically filling in lots that are already there. But again, it's eight lots taking the place of seven and things are being redigged. But again, we're filling in the middle. The next page is one that we wanted to update after this packet was put together. And I would ask you to turn to the single page that's like this. What we asked Horizons to do was to say, in a plan, based on where things sit today. Give us an approximation of where some of the key open spaces. Now, this is subject to movement around as the project moves and develops. But right now, you will see that there's an area along the river that is undeveloped and is likely to stay mostly undeveloped, which is a walking path down. You'll see an area over where the water tank is going to be, that some small part of that will have a water tank. That's going to be undeveloped. And then you'll see some ski trail over on the far right hand side of the developed area. We have reached agreement with Loom. The ski trail shown on this plan by easement, now Loom Mountain has the right to to use for ski trails. Right, Horizons did a mathematical calculation using their magic with CAD. That what's shown on this plan is in excess of sixty one acres of open space. Again, that doesn't count all of the open space on the individual lots, you know, that's not a home or a driveway, et cetera. And it doesn't include anything to the west, including all the Halsey parcel and everything else. So this will change over time, just like everything else. But we, what we wanted to depict was to the extent of what we started about open space, we wanted to show you that there is in fact a fair amount of open space and significantly more than was discussed in two thousand and six. And because the nature of the project, there will be additional ski trails coming along. So we think that will hands down meet whatever requirements the board needs. And we think we've, we bet it all red and green. Well, and also we didn't, we only included in this calculation, things that were really landlocked. There's no deeper development opportunity. So there's numerous areas, if you go up on top of Hemlock, that we have no intentions and no plans to ever cut in and add that. But it was uncertain if the water tank had to be moved, if something needed to change. But areas like you see in the middle of Crooked Mountain Woods and on the lower road, this a whole green section that is really landlocked by house lots now. That we know that'll never be a street going through there. So we wanted to make it clear that we already have sixty one and it's only going to be more to go from there. So it's just to simplify it, that we're going to continue moving and that's why. And for those of you that are curious, the difference between the two plans, it's very minimal. But where there is currently a water treatment plant or a water pumping station was initially covered in green and counted. And we realized that it shouldn't be, and so we pulled that out. And so that was an acre, so when from sixty to sixty one, so that's what the change was. Don't hurt like this effort. Okay, next page, next to see the page number is again page twenty seven. This is a very high level concept. Again, you know, this is not what's on the ground. This is. The interior lots. The base lot. Lodge, there's a whole type of, I decided to turn on exactly that. Lodge, there's a whole type of, I decided to turn on exactly that, infilling, you'll have the penny base lodge. Even you go to the last page, you kind of see everything. Again, this is all concept, this is literally a designer sitting down with Mark and his team saying, what could we do? How would this work? Where could we possibly put things? And the idea is to take what they've already got, expand that G lift penny base area, make sure it's got some nice gear services, as it was agreed by Loom, which was all approved initial. And then have an area off to the right where you see the beginner slope. That's the area which has been contemplated for the hotel-type area, parking, etc., and then all to the west even more.
And when you get up to the, all the way to west, it's really just, we don't know exactly what the dynamic will be of that, but we know that we are totally on board with the details of the master plan and going to continue to keep giving updates to all of the boards as we go. And we were hoping that all the research and organization of methods we've put in place are going to allow it to be easier on an ongoing basis to understand where's where we're at, we know exactly how many units, we understand what's going on, so it doesn't become a question, because it was a lot of years that there was no real activity or really good communication between the developer. So hearing and listening to the planning board, we wanted to take a pause, not look at development, but really dive into all these details, so everyone could have them, and everyone was able to have those as a resource guide moving forward. And I should say, it was a very helpful exercise. We had scores of thirty hours, it scored an engineer hours. Going back to the history of this thing to figure out what happened, we weren't there either. So to go back through the documents, we started to see what the town had, what what we wanted to supplement.
What we found, I mean frankly, the unit counts was difficult, because just like we're doing tonight, some of them expanded lots. Were on places at prior lots, so it was a net effect, and going back frankly.
Believe in the thousand eighteen units going through, and we're like, fifteen thousand square feet is more than thousand eighteen. You know, it's like, okay, let's dive into it now, and I will say, we are very, very fortunate that we have some people that were here. Horizons, Joe is there, the original, but Horizons, having the same company be involved throughout, three owners, and having all the documents at their disposal, it was huge, because there was things that without their records, we would have been in a spot where it's like, wait, what, you know?
So this is helpful to us, it uses a nice, provides us a nice baseline as we come in each time, even for something like the eight lot subdivision. We'll adjust this to show happened and inform.
Lastly, let's talk about the frequently asked questions. I'm not going to read them as much as we just.
Make sure that we have some reference points, so we understood green space was an issue, so I wanted to address that first. And sort of open space, we talked about that. We respect the water and sewer, but one thing I wanted to point out, and it's quoted here on the bottom of page one and on the page two, it'd been town stalking in oh-sixty, where they, they restate that they acknowledge and represent that whatever needed to be done, has been met and for full build at full build out. So they burned it, traffic, same thing, identified that the supplement, the agreements, and there was nothing additional that needed to be done, it's already done. And the, the Memorial Bridge, we brought that up because it had become an issue. All you guys really need to know is that Mark did do a retained engineer to do a safety analysis, because there was an issue about construction equipment going through the other bridge, and we wanted to make sure it was safe. And that's really partnership with Loom Mountain, and Loom is, I gotta give them credit for it, they've been really pushing that forward. But we're splitting the cost to keep that going as fast as possible for not just engineering studies, but design and going to be moving to make sure that that process where that ultimately gets rebuilt is done in a manner that is, is advantageous for the whole community, from skiers to the residents. Because there's a lot of work and a lot of energy that's going to go into that. We understand that's another undertaking that we're pushing forward. So thank you. With that long presentation, I'm happy to take any questions, but we are hoping that gives you some guidance as to where we start, and I, a small A lots of this.
Does anyone have any questions at the moment? Questions, so thousand eighteen units. That's, you say residential units, if you build a hundred unit hotel, will that come off of a thousand and eighteen?
That's true, yes. Okay, calculations were done, each hotel room is even the eight lots. Exactly.
At one point, was there a decision regarding the total number of bedrooms that he built there?
No, no, so that's something that if we go in and see the dynamic, that we're limiting certain things at the moment. We want to, we know that we've got more than enough allotments for the foreseeable future, but in the event we come into a situation that we say, we think we want to look at this, you know? We then want to be proactive. So, but it's not just, it's what's the actual usage is what the plan is based off of, not. That's something work and energy we're doing to keep this moving, we're looking at that as something that we have more than enough to continue on with what we're doing. We're regulating things as an association to make sure things are being done in a positive manner, and that's a lot of the regulations that the ARB and South Peak Association's doing, from quality control of construction to the size of a house you're putting on a specific lot, to what we're reconciling for lots, no, that's not.
Just original renderings of buildings that we are, we are aware that those are not what was approved, and the master plan we're working off of is what each step for the boards to be able to review and. That's he has a and what Mike and Asher said, we should listen to the planning board. They asked us to come. And move fireside to the lower levels, so we'd be able to continue to move forward and not be at a spot where we're saying, geez, we're down to the, they're getting this tank in. But we're doing whatever we can, and as the town's thing, we're sending people.
Thousand twenty per unit, is that you understand that some lots can be less than fifteen thousand square feet?
It's what, what our understanding, it's just a cluster, so we're not looking, there's going to be sections that are smaller, but then there's going to be open different ways, so that's the idea behind that.
Fireside is it less.
Some, some lots.
I mean, just want to make sure that everyone else, everyone else is understanding.
And again, it's no but to the two flags, or, you know, it's just that's the, that nature of.
Yeah, can you hear me, Jim?
Well, thank you for having us.
Yeah, I can't hear you very well. But I just want to make sure that, that we get an opportunity, all of us to review all of the information that was submitted tonight. Prior to making any decisions on either the eight lot or the master plan.
So I'll chime in on that, there, there's no decisions to be made on our update. It's merely providing you information about where we are, expect to be already approved master plan.
Well, I think there are, today we had some, from the planner, I don't know if you can hear me now. I'm sorry if I'm butting in on you, because I can't really hear much of that, that you're saying, but the, today I received an email from Carol Bont, the planner, from an attorney. Mr. Buckley, I believe, who said that we ought to be hiring an attorney to, to review the master plan and, and how it affects any of the changes to site plan, because there was never a site plan approval for any of this project.
That, that's not accurate. There was in fact site plan review every step of the way and approvals every step of the way, including the last.
Correct, but they were, they were, they were phase-oriented. Am I correct?
Perhaps so, but that's what the master plan is for, that's why we're doing it in phases.
And, and, and as such, phases, if each phase changes, or there are changes in phase, for example, on the fireside, fireside according to the master plan was supposed to be low density. And as it was submitted, it was submitted as a forty-one unit condominium development, that is not low density. So it does not conform to the master plan, and the the agreement between developer agreement refers to the acceptance of the master plan as being the guidelines for how the development was going to proceed. So there are things that changed, and I understand that, just like down at the the river, those changed, but those do affect certain things in the master plan, and they affect certain sites like that, that that the changes do affect, so you have to take a look at, when things do change, how do they affect them? And without reviewing all, being able to sit down and review all of that, I mean, the information, to me, the information for the master plan should have come in, been submitted prior to tonight, so people could have had a chance to look at it.
So I, I appreciate your comments, I'm more than happy to have the planning board and any attorney or anyone with the town review all of this in detail, I'm happy to talk about it further, discuss it, etc. But I would say for tonight's purposes, the eight lot subdivision, particularly given that it essentially is replacing seven already approved lots, just kind of rejiggering things and adding one on the end, that there's nothing of any materiality to the master plan that would in any way affect that eight lot subdivision. And, and I would also say, leave aside the eight lot subdivision, every time Mark comes in for an additional approval, at that point, the planning board, of course, has its opportunity to say, we don't think this fits within the master plan, and we're not going to approve, and we have the.
Yeah, right. It's not only that, it's not only whether it fits or not, it's, you know, the best laid plans of mice and men, but I mean, things that happen create changes that people didn't anticipate, so like traffic, you know, I mean, the traffic on Main Street is terrible, getting into Loom, getting into South Peak. How all of that, how all that's going to be handled? It supposedly was handled during the original master plan discussion, but I don't, quite honestly, I don't think anyone ever anticipated the amount of attendance or the amount of people that are using South Peak and using Loom Mountain, so I mean, it is it has had a, had a great effect. I mean, so there's things that really, really need to be thought out, and, and as far as the, the eight units that you're talking about now, there was a memo that was circulated from the technical review committee, and I think, I'm not sure if Ray is on still, but between Ray and the technical review committee and Carol, they generated a memo about what needed to be done.
Let's, let's get that, that's next item on the agenda, why don't you hold off and talk something?
And I, and I also want to point out that that's why we continued that eight lots until we had the opportunity to give everyone an update. That we wanted to not come, and even though it was a simple thing, we wanted to listen to what the planning board said, hold up, come in, if the, this is a fact, we've asked for continuances on that, I'm happy to ask for one again right after that, if we want to do it another two weeks from tonight. We are here to demonstrate that we listen to the planning board, that we are communicating everything, that, you know, Paul had asked specifically to dive into this, go through it, we didn't have all this research and energy that had yet spent to.
Yeah, you're kind of breaking up, Mark. I don't know if I'm talking over you or not, Mark, but I want to let you know that I appreciate everything that you've done as far as the master plan goes to South Peak. It's quite an undertaking, but it's one of the biggest developments in the town now, and I think in the future. And I, I think it's just important that we get it right, so that everybody can, can be as happy as they can be. You're not going to please everybody all the time, but you know, it certainly would be nice to have a big development that, that the effects of it are not felt so much within the town, and I think that's truly what the planning board's responsibility is, so I appreciate what you did, I just need a chance to look at it, I'm not there, I'm in Georgia, and unfortunately, missed the meeting tonight, but I would like to have an opportunity to look at that, as well as hear the responses for the eight lot subdivision that's been there for tonight.
I'm just, I'm hearing you, Paul, and I'm not, we're here tonight to talk about the master plan, we're not, that was why we were coming. The eight lot was on the agenda before we were asked about the master plan, that's why we continued it, if not, we wouldn't have applied for it. And we also understand, as a company, we're very involved with much more than South Peak. So we understand we're working with projects right now that are going through a technical, you know, committee, but we have more, much more vested than just South Peak, so we also share in concerns that are beyond what we already have approved. So when that comes to it, we have projects that are the rapids, we have the village shops and proposed projects, we have other properties on Main Street and other businesses we're now associated with that. We want to make sure that everything, everything's moving in a direction that it's driving, not just one specific resort. So there'll be numerous applications in front of the planning board and the town as a whole, with other properties that haven't been vested and haven't, don't have a master plan, that we're going to need to look at what needs to be done, and how do we have a good synergy. It's just pleasure of the board, whether you want to proceed or not. Get everything have good synergy. It's just pleasure the board, whether you want a procedure or anything. Your call, right? Yeah, we just, we're now, we just. Thanks for having us.
Any member of the public like to make some comments? Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
So are you gonna continue the?
So are you ready to?
We're ready to proceed.
I was gonna say.
That's they seem to indicate they're ready for the eight lot subdivision.
I mean, what 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 we're what we're pointing out.
He wants to look at. What they have. Anyway, well, I thought. I thought he was gonna continue it because.
So are you happy to continue to the next hearing? If the board's inclined that we we we're not. Here to push that eight lot subdivision. We only want to also, I don't understand the board with wondering at one point why we continue to push it. We were only pushing it out of respect for the board that we were told do not come for another approval until we have all the information on the master plan. So that's why we're in happy to discuss that next hearing and that way we now moved away from the master.
The way your attorney was talking, we were gonna talk about the eight lot subdivision.
I'm just pointing out, yeah, that's why we're technically here. For that was that that was the open agenda that was voted on. This was more informative.
So we don't have all everything in production row, the eight lot subdivision at this time?
Well, it's just that um they they're gonna respond to. How they dealt with our memo, for example. You know, that we had and they were gonna, we made modifications or we're in the process of making. Modifications in response to that, right? So.
I think Ray had Ray Ray had some comments to the the plan. Okay, we're in the process of responding. I think they might have argued it's time. There was no time for Ray to review that. Okay, so I think at this point, if we wanna let Ray review it with the engineers and come back to you guys at the next hearing. I submit gives everybody the time to.
Does anyone have any objections to continuing it for two weeks?
Definitely.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Is it is two weeks enough? I'd like to ask Mark if two weeks is enough. I mean, I. I think after the information, the wealth of information you gave between the master plan and. Answering those questions for the eight lot subdivision. It would be good to sit down, you know, give you enough time to answer those questions that Ray and. Technical review team had as well as. Any questions that we may have about the master plan? Um I. I honestly think it would be a a great idea. Have a public hearing. About the master plan, just so that. Um we can get the. Pulse of whether it's a butters at South Peak or. People downtown um that may have questions or comments about what your intentions are and they may be able to ask you the questions. As well prior to having anything like that. So. You know. We may have one set of questions, but the general public may have another. So. I think it would be nice to have some sort, you know, some sort of. Public presentation to just say where you're coming from. I know that was tonight, but I don't think that people really realize it um.
We worked really hard to do that and listening to the planning board, we worked really hard to do this in a public setting. Make sure we waited on our eight lot subdivision. Make sure it was listed of what's going on. And then in addition to that, I'm happy to wait. The answers to the state lots are already back over. It's a very simple project. I've been delaying out of respect for the board. So. I think if we're here in two weeks and there's, we need to do another continuance, let's do that. But at the moment, I'd I'd ask that we not. Postpone it.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. I mean, if if you wanna do that in two weeks, I'm just trying to give you, see if more time would be beneficial.
I think we're we're.
When I take a look at all the foundations you have down along the river there and there. Looks to me like you need some more contractors to build those.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue? Let's go, let's go on to that. So subdivision. Twenty twenty-three dash oh three map one eighteen lot thirty-nine South Peak LLC F C Moon LLC Crook and Mount Road eight lot subdivision. So you're requesting a continuance until July twelfth?
Yes.
Someone make that motion?
I'll make it.
Mr. Paul, all right, OJ seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I. What's that? Should I call this? Second Wednesday in July.
So really just yeah. This is a town talk of a really good game.
Why? Happy birthday. Well, if you come and be, we'll have a cake.
Yeah.
Thank you for everybody to do. I appreciate everybody doing.
This is very helpful for me. Thank you very much, yeah.
And I realize that. You did a really good job. I feel a lot better than I did.
Well, thank you. We're we're, well, that's what we wanna get everyone together, get it all, have the documents. We have a lot of other things. Products and we're coming and we wanna just keep setting the tone.
Well, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you've been a good partner with the town and I appreciate that. Absolutely.
And seemed it were jobs.
Yeah.
The amount of things I had. I have a good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Board and planning board got in town Lincoln industrial park and off the sale wave price following lots. They're making. Who's making the presentation?
Okay, well.
I'm assuming it's me, but I don't know what else.
Can't hear. The audio is terrible.
Having we're having trouble, I think.
And it's not gonna keep their connection isn't very well.
Maybe that connection will be better. Do you want me to do that? No. We have certified was coming tomorrow or something to um see if they can work. We might need to go from a wifi connection into the even actual fiber. Yeah, the. The wifi gets bogged down when we have like everyone in this room and they all connect to the wifi and then we have so many people on stuff.
So the first meeting would really have problems.
We had one this morning. Yeah, we have.
I also think the weather is probably factoring.
The weather is always a factor. Can I point one thing out before we continue? Um it's often referred to as the industrial park. However, it is the business park, part of the business park. And if you look back at the original documents. That were voted on at town meeting, it's the business. Not the industry small. Minor. Issue by. Sometimes when you say industrial, some people go, what? Around this with cross skull process on. All right, the um. Board contacted Jason Dennis, our town attorney. Talk about the deed restrictions that are currently in the deeds of the. Lots that have been sold with the John Hugh lots and the solid lot. And basically told us that that going forward of. We we could change the wording of restrictions in in that in those lots or in those deeds to those lots. Um you know, the board felt, first of all, it wouldn't. Be fair to do that unless the other two landowners were brought into the discussion so that we're we're not having conflicting or or discriminating. Um rules or or deed deed restrictions. But we wanted to first find out what the. Planning board's feeling was on this and and um. To try to just simplify it, I see, I see three different avenues we can get out, not that the street. Uh determined options, but there's three avenues. Various options within each one of those. One is to do nothing. Leave the restriction. Sell the lots according to those same restrictions that the other two landowners have and and people can go onto those and build um on the lots. Nothing else, no change. Second thing we can do is take a look. The restrictions and see if there's any change you wanna make. Bring that idea to a public hearing, discuss those with the two current property owners and then. Public. Or make any change. Is uh six different deed restrictions. I'm sorry, eight different deed restrictions. I have a copy of that. I'm missing that page. I have H. A to H. Have H.
Or I have a solid P, say A to H is what you're talking about.
Yes. I have. Um I have a second copy of those right here. Do you want this? Let me see what this one is. I do. This A to J. So we get on to those. First one says it can be used for light industrial and commercial purposes. I don't think there's any. For a selectmen, we didn't see any problem with that. The second one is any commercial light industrial. Uses this lot of structures there must be of the type expected to require regular onsite staff. Primarily intended for storage or other unattended purposes will be allowed. This is the uh. I'll say. I don't know what a controversial or questionable one, when you go back and look at the history and the discussion in the formation of the lot. Of these lots, there was a lot of discussion about self-storage units and the the adamant. Idea that thieves were not to use for self-storage. And I think at the time there was a proliferation of self-storage units being built. Um across the nation in New Hampshire and up in this area. And we didn't want this to become a whole section of different self-storage lots. That would not promote. Uh commerce and industry in this town. Um however, the way that that B is worded, this goes way beyond self-storage lots. And the the phrase um. To require regular onsite staff supervision and employment. Can be. Instrued to mean that a plumber can't do this because they're not plumbing that building. They're not plumbing my building and your building and. New construction sites. Electricians can't do it. General contractors can't do it. So so none of these tradespeople that again, if you go back and look at the. Um selectmen's meetings, planning board meetings, those are the type businesses that were being. Talked about at least. Uh when this was made, uh they're excluded under under a strict um interpretation of number B.
You know, let me ask you this. Wasn't the intention to provide jobs and benefits. I think that was part of the reason that is in there.
I think.
I think that was one of the goals of the park, have other, you know. Have a little bit better quality job in town. That's one of the reasons that's in there.
And again, I wasn't privy to all the discussion. I was just reading minutes, but it to me, it was more year-round um. Uh year-round employment. Better paying employment. Benefits, I guess I didn't catch that as a as a major uh point in in the discussion. But I think at the time there was, you know, everybody in town was either working at a hotel or a restaurant, then laid off for. You know.
Have jobs and evened out the peaks and downs.
So so I think that's what they were looking.
Jimmy, if I.
Paul?
Yeah, if I could interject as well. The original intent was to give local businesses, local businesses. And opportunity to have a place to start. Up a small business or to move to. Like the Donnie Landry and 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 you know, that's, those were the types of businesses that were named when the. Uh business park was first. Discussed. So it it wasn't so much about out of town businesses. It was about local businesses. Kids that come out of school and want to start a business, someone who already had a small business and. Didn't have the. Property and didn't want it in back. In their backyard, you know, give them an opportunity to do that. So I think that was. That that was a pretty big determining factor, I think.
And so plumbers and electricians except for Paul in that category. I'm asking you, Paul.
They would, but they wouldn't qualify in the deed restriction because they would have to have onsite.
I understand that, but I mean, it's, he said local businesses. I said, well.
We have plenty of. I mean, if you if you build it at the business park. And that's your business, that would be a local business because it's.
Rollish.
If the building is there, the business is there, it's local. It it implies.
Joe.
Good. Where you went crazy, afraid of the prototype. We're trying to say they have food type work, but if you're a plumber, electrician. Well, that's kind of business mechanic. The people be in and off site, they'll be there permanently all the time. A Christian can't have ten guys sitting in the shop. Couldn't let them turn their thumbs because they can't be doing any work in the house. They're in the shop.
Exactly. That's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying. Isolation off the old copper wires, solid for scrap.
If I did do a storage, the only thing it's stored is with. They've been doing. They've been doing their own business out there, restoring their stuff and building on the site and towards it. Material then. Back with one business wanting to come in and want to put in. A pipe. Storage pipe like they do down in Concord. For water, soil lines, and that would be that inside, it's sell a pipe off the off the unit. That'll be stored, but. Some of the guidelines were quite clear how you could do that, where it was written.
Okay. Let's, anyone have any questions on B?
One, sure, the other is just any change of business type um. Will require the written approval of Town of Lincoln. Um going back to what Joe just said, outside storage of materials will be limited to those storage uses approved by the Town of Lincoln. For those exact reasons that he just said. Uh maintenance of the grounds instructions be subject to intimate review. We wanted it to. And I should say, we, I wasn't there, but they wanted it to look nice.
I wasn't there.
Um they the next two relate to the expected construction. Of of any property has to start up within one year and then um. Uh complete that construction and development detailed in the food site plan within eighteen months. The town did not want these to be speculative purchases. In other words, I'm gonna buy the property, hold on with, maybe in ten years I can sell it and make a killer.
Right.
That's not the purpose. Um and that was the the. Way that they restricted that. Um and then no storage deemed to be hazardous waste. Again, obvious reasons. So you you know. I guess we can change any of all of these, but I think the big one in my mind is that B, does does regular. Um onsite staff supervision and employment. Um mean no self-storage units or does it mean no electricians, no plumbers, no masons, no general contractors, no tradespeople because they're not working the other work on site? That to me is the big question.
Well, I mean, if you leave A in there, that would eliminate. Well, maybe we won't eliminate self-storage. Because it's commercial use.
Well, I I think the way to eliminate self-storage is change B to say no self-storage.
Storage, right?
Self-storage units, period.
Well, of course, you have discretion as to whom you sell it to. So you can say, well, it's not really.
Well, we don't have discretion on what's in there for deed and deed restrictions. We can't change them. We we can sell it to the plumber. And he can sell it ten years later. He can't, he can't use it, but we can sell it to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know. Um. So so that to me is the big one. And and then the third. Avenue, as I call it, we can go down is to look at using. The remainder, what's remaining of this parcel um or portion of this parcel for for. Uh multi-unit residential use rather than a business park. Um. That whole subject obviously is controversial. We we know that the housing is big shortage. We also know that that um. You know, there's people who invested in land and and businesses in this park and and want to keep it that way without being surrounded by playgrounds and kids and traffic and all of that. Um.
So this is own its own zone.
It's.
So you'd have to go to the town meeting.
Exactly.
Do that.
Right, to do that.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, some people try to get change a different zone. The word has a piece a lot have been selling. But the way the ground town is growing right now. There's a lot more industry places coming in, a lot more service places coming in. They'll need a place, have a base from to play to base the workout. And if we put that all in something else, change it so. To do to do so, we wouldn't have an area of land for anybody to build that's on. Or ships that. And hire local people to work for. To do, to do so, we wouldn't have an area of land for anybody to build that's on, or to serve that, and hire local people to work for.
If you look at the, the way the land is now and where the Sullivan's building is. You could easily cut off, cut in half that property, so the southern part, where the cul-de-sac is. Um, with, you know, fencing, greenery, whatever. There, there's a lot kind of across Sullivan, that could be a turnaround lot of big trucks and whatnot, and it would still leave two cell lots. In the business park, you'd have the other access. We have access off Polo Road, in between the Liberty and Dumonts, the town has dated access to that other end. It could be workforce housing, multi-unit. Advocating one way or the other, I just looking at the lot, it can be done, um, whether it should be or not is not my decision, it's. The town's legal decision, but i- it could easily be done, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, you know, the land has stayed vacant, uh, what, since two thousand and five?
Well, they were talking about this thirty years ago.
Yeah, exactly, um, you know, we have the two owners. On, uh, the Zoom call here, I'd like to hear from them, what their feelings are. And they're the ones that have invested in the properties, they're the ones that run businesses out of that area. So, you know, I'd like to hear them and what the impact of changing might occur to them. Would they be in favor, would they be against it, uh, you know, that type of discussion with them.
Okay. So Mike and Bill. Would you like to weigh in?
Uh, has anybody been thought, Bernie right now is spending big time, is operating for millions of dollars of auto machinery in their plant.
The what?
Bernie.
Yeah.
And they've also talked to some people about putting a warehouse, and they have to supply for their warehouse, that we should be approaching them, except for the area.
Hey Jimmy.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
As a planning board member and a longtime Lincoln resident, I am totally opposed to changing this. To anything but a small business park. I think that some of the deed restrictions have. Added to the reason that Jack just stated that. Nobody's bought these things because they couldn't qualify. I think by change, I think what you ought to do is change the deed restrictions. See what happens, the top, the board of selectmen have already been approached by a realtor who said, look, I can sell some of these things. But the deed restrictions, especially the one we have to have people on property, is just too prohibitive. So, I mean, by changing the deed restrictions, you, these things might go a little bit faster and they might promote. You know, in this town, we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need carpenters, take a look around. Anyone who's sitting at that board, if you tried to find one today, you probably have a hard time, if you found them, they might come to your house in a month, if you're lucky. Unless you know somebody, so. I think we need to use this small business park to help this town out of the crutch that it's in. And, and, and get business, some of the small businesses in here that this town needs. And, you know, to, to change it to a, uh. Affordable housing, to me, doesn't work, we've got a lot of generations yet to come, and I hope that we're, you know, and, and planning ahead, which is our responsibility. We plan ahead and we allow for space for businesses and for other needs that may come before the needs of this town. And for me, to change this to anything but a small business park is, is the wrong thing to do. I agree with change, I, I agree with changing those, those restrictions though, I think OJ is right on with changing that one with number two.
I agree with him.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. I think option B, just tweak.
What Jerry, what Jack was saying, it's true, we haven't sold much of that stuff in the last twenty years. But that is like money in the bank of the town, not just money monetary wise, but we don't have the land for contractors and builders though. And suppliers come in and build on, have it operate the town, to work out of town, in the long run, it will affect it greatly. We need to keep that in reserve, even if there's not a ten, twenty years, finish it off. That's my opinion. Now, just get rid of it, just get rid of it, but keep it so it's long-term planning. The planning board right now, it's done very little long-term planning. Some of the stuff that we're going now, I expect, hasn't done twenty years ago, they don't look at it, because it didn't affect them. Planning, this, this business park, we keep it going, will affect the town in the long run, and if, I think, in a positive way. But if we get rid of it, just get rid of it. If you put workforce out there, and people aren't ready to go to work, this is bad.
Hey Jimmy.
Yeah.
Could, could I, could I make a motion? That the planning board support changing, uh, I, I think it was item number B. Uh, of, of the restrictions, but keeping, but keeping the, um, land as a small business park.
Well.
Mike or Bill trying to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, before you do that, I, I would not make, I would ask you to not do anything like that.
Let's get some more, let's have some more discussion.
Right, and, and, and not even just tonight. But they, this, this was kind of a rudimentary discussion, we talked about it at the, um. The select board, which I, I assume people watched it, or whatever, well, I assume people watched it, but, um, then we, it was more of a. Let's bring it to the planning board and get the, start the conversation and then bring other people in. I would, I hate for the planning board to make that decision tonight without giving the, the, especially the two owners the opportunity to come in.
Yeah.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute, Tammy, wait a minute here. We have both owners here, they're, they're part of this meeting, it's the planning board's meeting, it's not the board of select. It's not the board of selectmen's meeting, Tammy, come on. You guys always try to run everything, I mean, you know.
Please let me send the select board, um, at. This big, long-winded discussion about it, it was just, we're gonna bring it to you and get it out there. And then give both boards the opportunity to discuss it, bring in the key players so that they can talk about it. Um, so I would urge you not to make any decisions like that tonight, until especially the two owners at the, at the business park can.
I, I mean, of course, I agree with it.
Jimmy, well, w- w- wait a minute here, wait, whoa, 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 wait a minute here. The planning board's vote has nothing to do with what happens at the business park, okay? What happens at the business park goes to the, the board of selectmen. And their ability to change the deed restrictions on that property. And then it goes to the general public to vote on. My vote is only, my. Motion is only to support keeping it as a business park and changing the restriction that OJ is talking about. That's what my motion is, and I think that's a relevant motion, and I think it's for the planning board to decide, not the board of selectmen. If you, if the planning board is supporting it. I mean, Joe's sitting there saying, he, he, he agreed with it, and, I mean, I think a lot of people do agree with it.
So let the neighbors speak. Except for, no, except that it's a planning board issue, so if the, the selectmen decide, well, we want to split it up, and they want to see if the town will, will. Um, rezone it, we can't do that, that's a planning board decision, so if the planning board tonight. Agrees to support it as only a business park and not anything residential, and then those two owners come in and say, oh no, we want to see residential. There's nothing that can be done, they're, they're right here.
Well, I can tell you this, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan came in and said he didn't want to see it residential, because he didn't want a whole bunch of kids and stuff like that around his business property. And he had a very good point, I don't know what the unused feel like, but Mr. Sullivan's already spoke.
Okay, hold, hold on, Mike, not a you, are you there?
I'm gonna talk to you today.
He just unmuted, so he doesn't hear.
Mike, you can't hear, you're trying to say something?
And he may not have made the proper arrangements to be able to speak, because the select would specifically said. We're not gonna make any decisions, we just want to bring it to the planning board and start the conversation. Which is not giving him the opportunity to speak.
Everybody should have the opportunity to speak, but they're on mic, say their own feet on it.
Okay. Let me just, I guess we're not gonna get it.
He's unmuted, but.
Are you trying to weigh in?
Right. He's strong, Sullivan.
He is trying.
This is Mike Dunne, you, he's trying to weigh in. Mike, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on speaker so the rest of the, uh, boards here can hear you, is that okay?
That's fine.
Go ahead, say your piece.
Um, yeah, I've been wanting to not, until we're in here, but, um, I'm a very, I'm losing you constantly. Um. When OJ had his, his speech here on three options, I could only hear like a third of it. Uh, and actually, I just got kicked offline now, so, um. So I haven't really heard everything you've said. Uh, but. I, so I, I, I really can't respond to what you're asking, you know, because I haven't been able to hear what you're saying, what you're proposing.
I think you could give a brief recap, that the main, I think the two major issues are changing the deed restrictions. To allow businesses that don't have onsite staff. Or changing the zoning as a whole to allow multifamily or residential use, I think that's really what it boils down to.
Those two.
Did you hear that, Mike?
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm on, I'm here.
Sure.
In fact, I got kicked off for some reason. Um, but, uh. Uh, yeah, I got, I, I asked questions, the questions about it, but I haven't heard enough yet to ask them, but no, I don't have any, I burn one way or the other.
Would you like the opportunity to come in at a future meeting to?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I, I, I'd like to, Tammy, uh, I've got no problem with it, yes, uh.
Perfect.
Maybe a couple of things, I have no problem with it from it, uh. But yes, I understand what you're trying to do, I, I think industrial, it's an important thing, but, you know, if you want to. You know, I, I, I think there is ways.
Thank you for that, all right.
Can I speak for a second, Bill Sullivan?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Well, we, uh, really like the industrial park as a location for our business, wouldn't want any residential as. Far as we could have it in that area, it would be great to see other businesses. Uh, but our position is that we'd prefer not to have residential in the business park, but we would love more people to be using it for their business in the local area.
Thank you for that one.
Yes, I did.
I mean.
Anyone else have anything they want to add?
I just, I, I'm a voting member, but I like the idea of needing B. To omit for the employees on site, just keep, that's real, and B, if that in itself can promote more businesses.
Let me, let me ask, is anything being done in market slots, Paul?
We put that off until we have this conversation and decide something.
When was the last time I listed the sale?
Prior to the pandemic.
Yeah, it's been, been four years.
So, yeah.
Okay.
The pandemic kind of stalled all that, we just haven't got it going again, because we wanted to have this conversation. I am not opposed to, um. Changing the, uh, that B to, you know, eliminating that, replacing it with self-storage. Um. Try to market the whole thing and see what happens, maybe a year, two or three, and if they're still not selling. Then I'd like to have this conversation.
Well, you know, you did have the, not just administration, the previous administrations, they had a chance to sell some, and they wouldn't give up, climbed down to the price.
And they admitted that was a mistake, the end of you, it sat right there and said that was a big mistake, so that's.
Well, okay, I'm gonna be out then.
Oh, I don't, I don't.
From your phone, that's it.
Paul has a change, please. Coming through the TV, Jeff.
Don't make me, use the, the.
I'm gonna hang the phone up, because. Do it. Thanks.
Paul is up you, Paul, you're muted. Paul had his hand up.
Okay, he's talking.
Yes, sorry about that. Kept, ju- ju- just so the planning board is, is aware, Kevin McTheMare went into the board of selectmen. And had several people that were interested in purchasing those lots, but could not meet the deed restrictions. He said, if they could change those restrictions, he put them out, and he thought that he had at least several people that were interested in doing it. Um, as far as contractors, so, you know, there is, I, I agree with Tammy that, you know. We'll change, we, we should probably agree to change that and see where it goes, and if then it doesn't go anywhere. Then we can talk about it, but at least give it an opportunity and, and, and change that restriction.
It is the easier route of the two as well, as, you know, our attorney has mentioned, that it would be as simple as creating corrective deeds for the two owners that. Currently own properties, and then we could. Create a totally different deed that matched.
Correct, it is the, he, Donnie, you said he was a. Sullivan, it is, are, are you okay with changing that restriction B? Um, eliminating that and just replacing it with verbiage that says there's no self-storage units?
Yeah, as long as no residential is involved, that would be our position.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you for that. Yeah, um, just procedural wise. I think that changing those, those restrictions, I think there, there is, at least pointed to Kevin McTheMare, there is, it was in these, in the, and, and, you know. I can't think of what got assaulted. Real quickly, but we want quality people coming in, and I think that will happen.
Give it a shot, yeah.
If we decide to go that, we'll change these deep restrictions, it really just requires, um, a, a hearing. Board of selectmen to have a public hearing, notify it, make sure everybody knows, and, and, and also getting the agreement, which is about firmly from, from the two. Currently, though, technically, we don't have to do that, but I'd feel awkward if they're against it, and, and, and we said, well, too bad, but anyway. Um, that is a simple, simpler process, if we decide to, uh, go with the zoning issue with a multi-residential, we are talking about a zoning change. That would take place in March, and, you know, I don't even know what the prospects of that passing through town meeting vote would be, but I would say, um, it would be a.
I think there's resistance at the planning board level too.
There's resistance here, I think there's a resistance at the town meeting, I, I, and, and not just to. Avoid existence, but I think that the, the, the right thing to do would be to change these deed restrictions and bring in. Businesses into the business park.
I mean, it's not doing, it's no good hanging on to be somebody loved.
No, I agree, they're not, no. Some of that infrastructure is twenty years old, you're gonna have to find money for paving, upkeep, so.
Definitely, okay.
That's true.
By the business back door, five years ago, I recommended it to town. If they go to Montreal, they have a business forum, like they do down at the Bayside in Boston, a small business, there were so few registered in here. I have to go down with some people down with a fleet packet, present to them. So small businesses, even from Canada, come down, or small businesses down here, one company is open, wanted to put in. Oil tax, big man, hash, Mac, Man Valley Oil Tax. But everybody in the, everybody in the town board decided it was not worth it there, so it wouldn't cost anybody travel time, then I would have my friends, my friends. Wouldn't cost any housing, we're all gonna pay for it, it's a speed, create the table, and break the presentation. Somebody want to look at that again?
I think too, Joe, we could talk to the state, because, you know, they have an economic advisor for the North Country, I think Vino LaMontaigne. Um, is his name, and, you know, he could mo- uh, modify, you know. Business proposals, um, to different types of, uh, you know, business entities that might want to relocate up here, that might be looking, um, in the North Country. I mean, I think my life expectancy is another eight point seven years, so, you know, I'd like to see something done within that time.
Well, I would just change the zoning and, and then have it sit vacant again for another two decades. You know, I think if we have an opportunity to change the jurisdiction, and that will bring in. Businesses, I think it's a nice shot, it's, it's something that we. You know, maybe approach, it's an easier approach.
It's a, we're in a shot.
I mean, number one, you know, we're bringing in tax revenue, um, which the land has been vacant, so it's earning nothing. Number two, we'd be, uh, opportunity for additional jobs and support services for the community, so I think it's a win-win for us.
Okay.
Well, yeah, Jim, I'd like to reiterate what I said earlier, that. The original purpose was to help local people be able to find a place to start a business in town. And I'm all about, if someone from out of town wants to come in, I don't know how all that works, but I would like to see the ability. To hold off maybe one lot, two lot, whatever, so that somewhere in the future, if Tammy's grandson decides he wants to run a business. And there's a lot there that could possibly help him out. You know, we shouldn't be looking so short term at getting rid of them, what we should be looking at is helping local people as well, who've paid for that for years. So while I'm all in favor of, of changing it and getting more people in, help with the plumbing and electrical and carpentry that we need. I'd still like to be able to have my cake and eat it too, and be able to help a local resident. Child, entrepreneur, find a place somewhere. To be able to do that, because Lincoln doesn't have a whole bunch of land in his back pocket to be able to do something like that.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone have anything else on this?
This is pretty obvious, whatever's happening isn't working. So, like I said. Even the trade is maybe five, ten, twenty years to get all the lots. The years, we have them for the people who need them when they come in, like Paul said, coming to town, a couple of years, my kids may want to come back. Have a place to go to, if we don't do that, many places for everybody to go to.
We've had them in reserve, the franchise, they have to get to their own.
Who's local today may not be local in one year.
For twenty years, probably won't be a native one.
Jack, you calling yourself a local?
You want to buy a lot, Paul, or tell them a lot for your grandson, purchase it now, buy a sale.
Um, we need to hand out ADA compliance for parking spaces.
Okay, that's information, that's because, um, you know, we had a little curve up all over here. Um, about, you know, what the rules were ever. And I thought, well, we don't really know what the rules are, so we asked for the rules and. It's informational, so when we have something coming for us, we have our. Own little informational packet on you, hand it back, or, um, thank you.
Any public participation?
Well, we should do the minutes, then.
Oh, yeah, let's go back to the minutes, thank you. Sir, motion to go back to the minutes for June fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Second. Yeah, approve. We wanted to speak for next meeting.
Oh, we can do it tonight.
Okay. So your second motion, all in favor?
Okay, so did they?
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
I didn't see anything when they read it earlier.